I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's the regular meeting of the City Council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, to be held October 16th, 2012, at 6:00 PM at the council chambers. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Alinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Norman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pfeifer.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
And Councilmembers Ruben Howdige, Jessie Dowling, and Terrence Pratt are absent tonight.
That's unusual for us.
It is.
Okay, well, we have a quorum, so we can move forward. The next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and tonight we have with us Barbara Luttrell, who is a counselor at the city of Sedona, to lead us in the pledge. Will you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is a sum-
I do, I thought maybe I'd just give her both at the same time.
Okay. Next, we have a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or the city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartasch.
Madam Mayor, just several events to report to the council and also to the public. On October 27th, we're organizing our citywide cleanup, which seems like it's really coming together very nicely. And on October 31st is our traditional fall carnival in Old Town and all the trick-or-treating that goes on down here. The mayor has a coffee talk on, what's this week, the 17th?
Thursday at 8:00 AM, the 18th.
At the rec center to talk about the general plan. And then walking on Main is scheduled for November 10th, and that's another event here in Old Town. And then the next day, November 11th, we have the Professional Disc Golf Association Tournament, which is going to be called the Veterans Classic, and they are taking donations for, to support the veterans. And last weekend, we had a junior rodeo at the Equestrian Center, where they had 100 participants and 300 spectators. So it was a good weekend for rodeoing. All right, that's it, Madam Mayor.
All right, council? Everybody's busy, but when we get here, we always forget what we've been doing. Okay, I'll just run through a few things. On October 3rd, since we last met, I participated in a walk to school day, and Carla Hoover of Yavapai County and Barb Urin, our Cottonwood Oak Creek School District Superintendent, were there. And gosh, I would say we had several hundred kids, it seemed like. There were a lot, I took a lot of pictures. And I don't know if the council, if any other members, I couldn't attend the second one, the junior high one, I don't know if anybody else made that one. Okay, it's great seeing all the kids, a few of them have bicycles, and it's just an effort. Carla Hoover from Yavapai County got a grant, and she does this every couple times a year. They've actually moved to Sedona now, too, to do it in Sedona. But it's great for the kids, and it's trying to encourage them to walk more or ride their bikes to school. I attended the NACOG Elders Conference, which was very inspiring. The featured speaker this year was a young sports-minded woman in her 20s who was a bicyclist and very competitive, and she was hit by a car and became a paraplegic in her 20s. And it was all about her efforts to overcome her new life, I guess, so to speak. And so she took up riding a bike with her hands, I guess it was kind of a recumbent bike. And she even went into, she didn't just go into, you know, disabled persons races, she actually raced in other races. And what she would tell herself was that she was just racing against herself this time, you know, and if she could just make the finish line, she was inspired. But she talked about how challenging it was, and she was really an inspiration, you know, that we really can do a lot more than we think we can. They always have a great speaker at these conferences. And then Mary Eichman, who we'll talk, meet later, was honored with the Accomplished Elders Award, and I believe she was, there were only three that were chosen out of 17 applicants, so we're very proud of her. And I would just like to remember Joy Elizabeth Prattz today, who passed away last year on October 7th, and it's been a very difficult year for her parents, and she's still very much missed by her parents and the community. The grape stump was held, what, last Saturday or two Saturdays? Two Saturdays ago. And Casey did a great job, as he always does. We had about 75 folks there, and I didn't, I didn't see Tom there this year, and I really missed you, Tom. And Yavapai College often brought a great big crew along, and so we really missed you. Maybe in future years, you guys can come help us out again. You're very special in our community. We'd like to thank Tom Schumacher for all he's done for the wine industry, an incredible amount of work, and he's in our audience tonight, so we can say thank you to him. On October 11th, I was invited to attend the Elvay Art Association's 40th anniversary. And does anybody know Bee Chavez? She is, she was just so awesome. She got up and talked about, well, 40 years ago, she was on the original committee that created this, and she was sharing how the community wanted to change its name because they couldn't pronounce Elvay. And I guess she just explained to them that they shouldn't do that, and it was really cute, her story. But she had a story about her son, who was also injured, became injured after, I guess, I think it was after, maybe it was before. They created Elvay, the Elvay Art Association, and he was a quadriplegic, and they showed a portrait that he had painted, and it was just amazing what he had done, even with his disability. So I enjoyed meeting with all of those folks. We had a Bike MS meeting, and it's going to be, is it the second weekend in May, Doug? The Bike MS, second weekend?
I don't recall.
Okay, well, when we get closer to it, we'll, we'll give the date, but we're really excited about it, and we're talking about how we can get the schools involved. And they're talking about having a mayor's race with all the mayors in the Verde Valley, so.
I'll sit in for you.
And a trophy for the worst mayor, maybe, I don't know. But it'd be great if the council could be involved, too, so that would be fun. But we're looking forward to that. Do you want to add anything about the MS bike ride?
No, other than it was a very successful event last year, and we hope it's going to be even more successful this year.
It brings a lot of people into the community and-
Absolutely does.
They get to see Cottonwood and-
And it's for a good cause.
It is, it's a great cause. Then I also attended the Greater Arizona Mayor's Meeting in Chino Valley, and we discussed the resolutions that we passed at our last meeting. Everyone was pretty much on board with all three. Sedona had a little bit of a different outlook on the, the resolution about the police or workman's comp and that sort of thing. But they did support the part of removing the part where the, where the employee would be paid more to stay home than to work. And then the three mayors from the river communities were a little bit concerned on the state parks resolution. They would rather have an opt-in than an opt-out if we did try to do some fundraising for state parks. And with that, that's my report for this meeting. The next item is called to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action, per Arizona Revised Statute 38-43102H, and comments are limited to a five-minute time period. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak? If not, we'll close the floor to the public and move on to our proclamations. We have three tonight. The first one is proclaiming November 11th, 2012, as Mitzvah, or Good Deed Day, in Cottonwood. And Barbara Luttrell, Counselor Luttrell from Sedona, is here to accept this tonight. Whereas individuals and nonprofit organizations in Cottonwood need help beyond what their means and current structures provide. And whereas volunteerism is the willingness of people to serve others without being motivated by their own financial gain. And whereas mitzvah, which is the Hebrew word for commandment, has come to express acts of human kindness. And whereas mitzvah, Good Deed Day, helps organizations attract new volunteers. And whereas this day of service represents a significant value to the individuals and organizations of Cottonwood. And whereas each year since 2007, 300 to 500 volunteers have come together on Mitzvah Day to complete projects for organizations, individuals, and our land. And now, therefore, I, Diane Jones, Mayor, in recognition of the important role of service in the community, do hereby proclaim Sunday, November 11th, 2012, as Mitzvah, or Good Deed Day. A spirit-led day of community service to individuals and organizations in Cottonwood and the Verde Valley, and urge all citizens to recognize the outstanding work of volunteers and to support these efforts by volunteering for one of the many projects designed to care for one another, the community, and the planet. And Ms. Luttrell, would you like to add anything to that?
Mayor, Mayor Councillors, thank you so much for allowing me to be here this evening to accept this proclamation, and also to thank you for proclaiming Mitzvah Good Deed Day here in Cottonwood. Mitzvah Day started, this will be our sixth year, and when it started, it was basically centered in Sedona, but when we did the call for projects, we had a number of projects that came to us from other areas of the Verde Valley, including Cottonwood. And so we've continued to expand. The first year, we had about 300 volunteers take on about 30 projects, and this year, last year, we went way above that. We've already hit as many as 500 volunteers in a given year, doing well over 40 projects. This year, our goal is 500 volunteers, 50 projects. And on the flyer that I've passed out to each of you, you'll see the details of the day. Our mission with Mitzvah Day is to accomplish the projects for organizations and individuals throughout the Verde Valley, and also to introduce people to the organizations that need volunteers all year long. And if you turn it over, you'll see that there are a number of projects that will be specifically in Cottonwood. At Catholic Charities, we're doing a cleanup. Verde Valley Habitat, we have done, this will be our sixth year that we've worked with Verde Valley Habitat. The St. Joseph's Catholic School is new to us this year with a project, including doing some concrete work as well as painting jobs. Verde Valley Humane Society is not listed on here, but they've added a project recently for people to come to the Humane Society in order to help them with a cleanup as well as various other aspects. There are craft projects, there are indoor projects, outdoor projects for all ages. I see a wonderful representation of youth in the audience tonight. We would love to have the schools get involved and take on specific projects so that it would be their community service. It's Sunday, November 11th. We also have some specific projects honoring vets and reaching out to vets and their, to veterans and their spouses if they need some help at home, cleaning up the yard, taking care of gutters, washing windows. We already have some requests coming in. So I would encourage all of you and everyone in the audience tonight to take home one of the flyers, give me a call, you can check out the details on our website, and then give me a call and tell me what you'd like to volunteer for. I encourage everyone to help us spread the word, because this is an amazing day of community service. And you can check in to the project either in Sedona or at Spirit of Lutheran Church here in Clarkdale, right off of 89A. They'll be doing the check-in and opening for anyone from Cottonwood who would like to be going over there. So thank you again, and I hope I see all of you on Mitzvah Day, November 11th. Thank you.
Thank you so much for all you've done for Mitzvah Day. I, you've done this for years, you're a marvelous community organizer.
A great project.
And I think, I recall, you've also done things in the community garden here in Cottonwood, if I recall.
Yes, they were one of our projects previously, and I didn't have a request for it this year, but we're more than happy. It's still open to projects. If you know of an organization that has a project, just contact me.
Okay.
Because we'll have at least 100 volunteers show up that day who never signed up, and we just dispatch them to various projects.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Well, if you'd like to just come down here, and we'll, our nation, and it just- Are you going to be Mr. Tuck?
Oh, sorry. Urine.
So on behalf of my colleagues on the council, we'd like to give you this appreciation certificate for saying the pledge of allegiance, and we would like to give you this pledge. You're welcome.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thanks.
So again, for our audience, both our television audience, our citizens, and for our, our public here, you can volunteer and do something great for your community. If you know others who might like to do it with you, let them know about it. Okay, so moving on to the next item, proclaiming the week of October 22nd through 26th, 2012, boy, that's a tongue twister, as Arizona Cities and Towns Week. Whereas the citizens of the city of Cottonwood rely on local government to experience a high quality of life in our community. And whereas local governments around the state of Arizona work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to deliver city services such as fire, police, and emergency medical services to create safe communities, and not to mention water, wastewater, and all of those things, too. Whereas the methods of funding these vital city services are not always clearly understood by our citizens. And whereas it is one of the responsibilities of city officials to ensure that legislators, media, and citizens understand their local government through open and frequent communication using various avenues and means. And whereas it is important to work to encourage the connection and inform citizens and state legislators of the importance of state shared revenues in order to preserve the excellent delivery of services for our citizens and the services that they have come to expect. And whereas through education and awareness, citizens, community leaders, and city staff can work together to ensure that services provided by the city of Cottonwood can remain exceptional elements of quality of life in our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood joins the League of Arizona Cities and Towns and fellow municipalities across the state of Arizona in declaring October 26th, 22nd through 26th, in 2012, as Arizona Cities and Towns Week. And if you could, maybe upload this to our web, or our city page, or Facebook, or whatever, so that the public can reread it, because it really has important information in there. Okay, proclaiming October 16th, 2012, as National Feral Cat Day. Whereas October 16th is National Feral Cat Day, a dedicate, a day dedicated to educating communities about feral cats and the Trap, Neuter, Return Program, a human method of care for outdoor cats. And whereas Trap, Neuter, Return improves the lives of cats and stabilizes cat populations. The stresses and behaviors associated with mating, such as yelling and fighting, stop. Trap, Neuter, Return is recognized throughout the United States and other countries as the humane and responsible way to take care of feral cats. Now therefore, I, Diane Jones, Mayor of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 16th, 2012, as National Feral Cat Day. In and for the city of Cottonwood, and encourage all citizens to support Trap, Neuter, Return as a responsible and humane method of care for feral cat populations. In witness whereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, to be affixed the 16th day of October, 2012. And let's just remember that we have a feral cat population because we humans aren't doing what we're supposed to be doing in caring for our animals. So if we can work together as a city to be better at this, we'll have a better city and be better people. Okay, the next item is introduction of new employees, communicate, whoops, did I miss something?
No, you're right, you're right.
Okay. Okay. Introduction of new employees, communications specialist Jennifer Reich and Rowdy Scott. Have I said those names correctly? Roush, okay, Roush.
Don't you make me practice that for all of you.
I'm glad I asked. Okay, and we have Commander Isinka with us tonight.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm proud to introduce our two newest communications specialists, Jennifer and Rowdy. Jennifer comes to us from Tucson, born and raised there, moved to Vegas, back to Tucson, and then back to Cottonwood in 2010. She has three children, two boys and a girl. She's been with us for, I think we're on your seventh month now, doing a great job. She's actually a solo dispatcher now for us already. And then Rowdy Scott, you probably recognize the last name, he's Morgan's baby brother? Morgan's younger brother. So Rowdy's been here for a while, attended Mingus High School, met his fiancee here in Cottonwood, and they're going to be getting married in November.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Second month now, I believe, coming up on the second month, I think, and also doing a great job for us. So, yeah, we appreciate their hard work, and they're doing very well.
Great. So it would be nice to get a photo of our city manager with your new employees, and I guess I'll take it.
I was going to say, that's going to be really tricky.
Slow shutter speed.
I'll come up here where our television-
Yeah, you too, get up here.
For thirty years, they told me where to go.
And we have Jeff Clark, a library clerk.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. I'm happy to introduce Jeff Clark. He actually started with us as a part-timer through the Mingus Union High School Work-Study Program that we have going, and he became a full-time employee in August.
Congratulations. All right. We always ask you to, to give us a 10-minute speech, but, you know. Absolutely. You certainly may, would you like to? Okay, so if Mr. Bartasch would want to- Welcome to new employees. Attached to it. Yeah. And if you haven't signed on to the city's Facebook page, you'll probably see these photos on the Facebook page. So we're, we have about 520 friends, and you wouldn't believe how much information is on that page, just always something going on. Okay, and the next is Alan Hillberger, Facilities Maintenance Specialist. And we have Jason with us, Jason Little, tonight.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I don't know if you want to have Brittany come up?
Oh, and Brittany.
We could just get her.
Right. Brittany Lawler is the new youth programs coordinator.
Al recently was hired to work with us at the Cottonwood Recreation Center. He's in the maintenance department. He was raised in New Port Feach, California. He moved to Cottonwood, met his wife, and they have two boys, ages five and seven, and their names are Ash and Ian. We'd like to welcome Al aboard, and then we have Brittany, and you guys all know Brittany, she's been with us for six years now. She, we were just talking about that today, she started in the youth commission when she was 13 or 14, something like that, but she was born and raised in Cottonwood. She was recently hired as the youth programs coordinator. It's a split position with the Oak Creek School District. Great to have her aboard. She spends her time at Oak Creek School in the mornings, and she spends the afternoons with us at the recreation center. So, Al, Brittany.
Oh, great, that's wonderful. I know that you both do a great job, and, and we appreciate. I was excited to see that Brittany was hired for that position. I think she'll do a wonderful job, and we all know Brittany from years ago. Well, welcome to all of our new employees, and we hope that you have a very positive experience in serving the citizens of Cottonwood. It's a great honor to serve the citizens of Cottonwood. It's a great honor to serve the citizens of Cottonwood.
Madam Mayor, just so the council knows, each one of the new employees actually goes through an orientation program, and part of that program is they meet with me for about an hour, hour and a half, and we have a, it was actually started by Brian. We have a PowerPoint, you know, display and talk about the history of the city and our values and our budget and the type of government we are. And so it gives me a great opportunity to meet all our new employees and also to kind of educate them on how the city runs.
That's great, and you're creating a relationship and that you can, you know, they feel like that you're accessible to them.
Yeah, that's one of the things we talk about, is the fact that we're an open-door organization, and so we believe that if they're satisfied, they're going to do a better job. And we like to respond immediately to concerns of employees so that they can focus on what their job is and not on that concern, so good group of folks though.
Great, and I think you excel in that area.
Thank you, Mayor.
So thank you for doing that. Okay, the Quarterly Employee Safety Award, Jack Teal, Parks and Recreation Head Lifeguard. Jack's here, there, oh, there, I was, I see he's in the back. I would just like to say Jack did an awesome job helping the city clerk and I and the other council members that participated in the Fit Kids luau, not Fit Kids, Let's Move and Fit Kids was a cosponsor, so he was just right there, so I know how great a job he does.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of council, I could say so many things about Jack Teal. He has the highest respect for me that I could give anyone. He's the man who mitigates my risk management nightmare there at the Recreation Center, the bodies of water, the pools, he does all of that. He manages 36 part-time employees through the summer, he has probably over 20 in the winter, and primarily all of these kids are high school age, first jobs, so he has to more or less break them in, teach them, you know, the meaning of getting to work on time and various things like that. He does a great job with all of that. Like I said, it's all there in your packet, I could say so much, but I won't put him through all of that. So I'd just like to thank Jack for all he's done for us. He's been with us, I think he's the fourth longest-tenured person in the Parks and Recreation Department. He started when he was 15 years old.
Wow.
He's one of our longest.
Wow, just.
If you know me, you know I'm not really big on personal awards, really I just want to say thank you to my surrounding cast, you know. I wouldn't be here without the support from Mr. Richard Paus and Mr. Jason Little and Hezekiah Allen. And you know, really the only reason I'm here is because of my lifeguards, my lifeguard supervisors have done such a great job getting me here, you know. Without them, I would not be here, without their always putting their thumb down on the guards, helping them out, being there if I need something, helping me keep the pool clean, helping like Jason said, keep our risk management down. Lacey O'Connell is one of our lifeguard twos here. She's done a fantastic job all year for us since she came into the position, and you know, really this award is about them. I'm the one who is receiving it, but really this is a team award, so I wanted to say thank you to everyone at Parks and Recreation and everyone on my lifeguard.
That's great. So whoever, we have a little something for you. So if you want to, council, there's so few of us, why don't you all go down? I'll take the photo. And then if you want to get any of your team that's here tonight up here also. Say cheese.
Cheese.
All right, one more, in case someone has one eye closed. And then the Vice Mayor has a little present for you there.
He gave me a trophy.
So thank you. It's the quality, the high quality of employee that is typical for the City of Cottonwood, and we certainly appreciate you, Jack, and everything you're doing and the team that you're leading.
Well, thank you guys. Appreciate your behalf of jobs.
All right, the next is recognition of community awards. And we have with us tonight Mary Eichman, and she recently won the Accomplished Elder Award, which was awarded by the Area Agency on Aging and Northern Arizona Council of Governments. And I submitted Mary for this award. Mary has served as my volunteer assistant for, gosh, what, three years, four years now, several years? And I've just had the privilege of watching Mary in the community, and I would say that she spends part of every day serving other people. She works at our library, she's the chair of our, our library, Friends of the Library bookmarks, and she has done that for how many years now? Gosh, quite a few. And she's also works with Verde Valley Caregivers, and she's constantly volunteering in the community to go to an elders home, pick them up, take them to their doctor appointment, take them home, pick them up, take them shopping to get their groceries, or she will actually go and do some of the shopping herself if they're not able to get out of the house. And there's probably two or three more pages of things that Mary does in our community, and I can't think of anybody that really deserves this award more than Mary Eichman. So Mary, if you would come up? And if you want to say anything, you're certainly welcome to.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for nominating me. I credit a lot to your good writing skills with making me look really good, but I do really enjoy my retirement by volunteering a lot, because I worked for 35 years, and so now I can do what I want to, when I want to, and that's what I do. And I would like to add one thing about Mitzvah Day, I helped with that for a couple of years. Since I'm not into physical labor, I helped with the registration and setting up the tables for food, so I would say that no matter what someone's physical skills are, to certainly consider helping with that this year too.
Great. Vanessa, will you come up with us? Because I consider you a part of this. And we'll have our photographers, our city manager photographer.
Well, I'm a little disappointed that I'm not going to get a hug from the city manager.
We just won't get it on film.
We'll just get it on TV.
Got a chance. It was never a good shot.
They're learning a new skill, see? And you spank me, right?
Okay, is approval of the minutes of 10 to 12. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Mr. Ilinski made the motion, Councilmember Norman seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. Unfinished business. Number one is ordinance number 589, amending the municipal code by deleting Chapter 2.52 Library of Title II Administration and Personnel and adding a new Chapter 2.52 Library, second and final reading. And we have with us tonight our library manager, Vanessa Ward, to explain this revised ordinance.
The revisions are for getting rid of the director, since we now have a manager, and it's all basically housekeeping, and changing our library board to a library advisory board. We are seeking approval.
I did, I had one question for our attorney on this, and this is the second reading, so we've already discussed this in length at a former meeting, but where it says, and this is just in the council communication, so it's not, it says this allows for up to two non-resident members while providing the flexibility to appoint city residents to those seats in the event that there are no non-residents interested in serving at a time that the vacancy occurs. And my question is, is if you had, for these two positions, if you had a resident and a non-resident, but the council preferred the resident, would that be okay?
The way it's drafted, Mayor, yes it would.
Okay, all right. I just, as I was reading that, that just, I thought, well, I wonder what if, do we have to appoint a non-resident, or can we do either?
Right, and the way, the way we decided to draft it was to give the council maximum flexibility to allow for an appointment when there was only city residents.
Right. And we're, I think council is very supportive, at least in our former discussions here of this, because we do have, gosh, 50 or 60 percent of our customers at the library, our patrons are from outside of the city. And so in our effort to become more regional, we've asked staff to put a couple of positions on this library advisory board who can be outside of the city and represent those people that live outside of the city. Okay, I had another note. Oh, I had another question, this is for the city manager. You know how I am about the library and the books, right? It says in the council communication, oh no, it actually says in the ordinance number 589, it says, it talks about the operate, that we will support the operation and adequate growth of the library during each fiscal year. And I was wondering, what does adequate growth mean?
Means we always want more.
Pretty much.
Always fighting for more.
I was happy to see this in here, that we are through this ordinance to support our library and to be sure that its needs are met, so.
And it has grown.
I think our annual budget was close, over $800,000.
Yeah, and I'm trying to remember, because I know it's always a hot topic, what the budget is for new books.
Forty thousand.
Forty-eight?
Forty.
Forty.
And I know sometime, a couple of really lean years during our budget crisis, sometimes we didn't get the 40. And you always heard from me about that.
And me.
Yeah, and the council. So I'm glad to hear that you're getting some new book money, that's good.
Yes.
Are there any other questions or discussions about this item from council? Are there any comments from our public on this item? If not, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve ordinance number 589.
Second.
The Vice Mayor made the motion, Councilmember Norman seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. City Clerk, would you please read ordinance number 589 by title only?
Ordinance number 589, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, amending the municipal code by deleting Chapter 2.52 Library of Title II Administration and Personnel and adding a new Chapter 2.52 Library. Madam Mayor.
Okay. And we did have a member of the board.
She just left.
She, I wanted to introduce her. Will you tell her that she left a little too soon?
I'll tell her.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. And we do appreciate the work of the board and of Vanessa and all of your employees for making our library a really special place for our community. All right, the consent agenda. Item number one is Resolution number 2671, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the town of Clarkdale for transportation services. Item number two, Resolution number 2672, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Yavapai County for transportation services. Item number three, Wine Festival liquor license applications from Alcantara, Arizona Stronghold Vineyards, Burning Tree Cellars, Havelina Leap Estate Vineyard, Pillsbury Wine Company North, and The Wine Cellar for the Walking on Main Event, I guess I don't say that right, The Walkin' on Main Event, scheduled for November 10th, 2012 in Old Town. Item number four is approval of a job order contracting quote in the amount of $118,629.48 from Tiffany Construction for installation of sidewalk and curb improvements of both sides of Cactus Street and the south side of Penale Street between Cactus and Main Streets in Old Town. Are there any items on the consent agenda that the council would like to pull for discussion? Are there any items that the public would like to pull for discussion? Okay, and item number four, we talked about, I think, at a previous meeting, if I recall. So do I hear a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Councilmember Norman made the motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Ilinski seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Oh, yes. Okay, City Clerk, please read Resolution number 2671 and Resolution number 2672 by title only.
Resolution number 2671, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the town of Clarkdale, Arizona, for public transportation services for Clarkdale residents. Resolution number 2672, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Yavapai County, Arizona, for public transportation services for Yavapai County residents. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. New business, the following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Item number one, finally, you have all been so patient, when you're probably sitting there thinking about how much homework you have to do tonight. Item number one is Resolution number 2668, appointing members to the city's youth commission. And we have Jason Little with us tonight to explain this item.
Yeah, I hate to clear out your room, but Madam Mayor, members of council, it's that time of year again whereby the youth commission is looking to fill seven vacated seats on the youth commission. While the commission would like to fill one of those seats with last year alternate Ashley McCouch, the commission is looking to fill the other seats vacated with an additional six individuals. The six individuals being recommended are highly qualified, and they have, they did quite well in the interview process. If council agrees to approve this item, the new terms of office will be established expiring August 1st, 2013. At this time, I would like to give council an update on the 27 youth commission program graduates who have came through the youth commission. This real brief. Currently, you have one alumni attending U of A studying for LSATs. You have seven attending ASU whereby two are in Vera Honors College, and one is studying sustainability and running ASU's entire recycling program.
Wow.
That's Kaden Schumacher.
Awesome.
You have four attending NAU, you have three graduates who have or are currently attending Yavapai College, you have one attending Santa Clara University, one attending LaTerno University studying civil engineering, two graduates attending Grand Canyon University, two graduates attending Mesa Community College on mission trips, one graduate from Emory Riddle that works for the state senate, one graduate from John Brown University studying for his PhD in Northern Ireland.
Wow.
You have one graduate from Xavier University teaching, and one graduate with a master's degree in speech therapy from UCLA.
That's pretty impressive.
So of the 27, all of them have went to college, and that's how they have excelled, so all of you guys have big shoes to fill.
That would be really awesome if you could put that on the, on your internet page for the youth commission.
Yeah, I'll write something up. And the youth commission's mantra is to always dream big. Our commission graduates not only dream big, but they make those dreams a reality.
They do big.
Now, I'd like to turn the floor over to Ashley McCouch, and I would like to let her and Lacey O'Connell go ahead and finish. her and Lacey O'Connell go ahead and finish this item up, and then I'll turn it over to you guys for any questions.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, as mentioned, the youth commission is recommending to council that the empty seats are filled by the following applicants. First is Carrington Midkiff. Carrington, can you come up and tell the council why you want to serve on the youth commission?
Hi. I'm very excited to be a part of the Cottonwood Youth Commission, and I've been really interested in it since I was a lot younger, because my older brother has been involved in it since he was in eighth grade, so I'm very excited to be a part of it, too.
Thank you very much.
Now, we have Rachel Valentine. If you can come up and introduce yourself and tell the council why you want to serve on the commission.
Hi, my name's Rachel Valentine. I go to Clarkdale Jerome School, and I'm in eighth grade. I want to be on the commission because I really like helping out my community and want to help make a difference, and I really like, I've seen the, them out doing certain events, and I would like to be a part of them as well, and I really like working in a group.
Great.
Thank you.
And her brother, Robert, has been on the commission, as well as Spencer Midkiff, Carrington's older brother, and they have done fantastic jobs.
Now, we have Krista Earl. Krista, would you like to introduce yourself?
I am Krista Earl. I go to the Cottonwood Middle School here in Cottonwood. I'm in eighth grade. I'm part of the National Junior Honor Society there. I'm really excited to be a part of the commission, because I want to make a difference in the community and see those happen. So, great.
Thank you very much.
Next is Wyatt Midkiff. Wyatt, would you like to come up and introduce yourself?
Hello, my name is Wyatt Midkiff. Spencer Midkiff is also my older brother. And I'd like to, I'm interested in Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission, because I'd like to see positive changes be made in the community, and I'd like to contribute to that as well.
Thank you very much.
Now, we have Marshall Schill. Marshall, if you could come up and explain to the council why you want to serve on the commission.
Hello, my name is Marshall Schill, and I'm currently a junior at Mingus Union High School. I've always wanted to be in leadership and help out the community, but I never knew how, until I met this program, which these people are awesome people, I know all of them, they're great people, and I feel like this is a really good idea to get involved in the community and help out things, and I really want to bring some town pride to the place, and I really want to help out the community. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Next is Sirloks Sengswang.
Good evening, my name is Sirloks Sengswang, and I'm a sophomore, and I go to Mingus Union High School. I've heard of this club a year, in my freshman year, but I didn't get a chance to join it because I never volunteered before, and I was really nervous, because I was afraid that the club would reject me, but then my friend, he's in the club, his name is Charles Novak, he was urging me to join, and, you know, I figured, why not? Because I don't really have anything to do besides homework, and I thought this might be a good idea to just, I mean, this club is helping the community, so something to give back to Cottonwood.
Thank you very much.
We also recommend to the council that we have two alternate members, Gabrielle McCouch and Santana Makioli, who are both in the audience.
Yes, if you'd like to come up and say a few words, that would be great.
Hi, my name is Santana Makioli. I'm in eighth grade, and I come from the Cottonwood Middle School. Pretty much the reason why I got into this, this group, was because I really had nothing kind of going for me my whole life, so I just thought it would be a really good idea just to help out the community, it's like pretty much everybody says, but I'm just to help out and try to make things better around here.
Thank you very much.
My name is Gabrielle McCouch, I'm in ninth grade, and just like everyone else, I like to help out the community.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Lacey O'Connell, and this is my second year on the commission, and I would like to explain the process that the applicants go through in order to be selected for the commission's seat. First, we advertise the vacancies throughout the community, and presentations are made to the middle and high school students. An application deadline is set, and then the commissioners review the applications and score them based on the applicant's answers. We schedule oral interviews, which include thought-provoking questions on how they would make changes in the community and what they would do. Yes, sorry. We then add up full scores to establish the final score. As mentioned by Jason, we are here to ask council to consider these individuals for the youth commission. We will be back in January to give a council, to give council an update on our progress, and would like to invite the council to our meetings this year. We plan on setting the meeting dates in the near future, and we'll send them to you. Thanks again for considering, for your consideration pertaining to resolution 2668. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to share with all of our youth commission members and candidates that you are very important to the city council. Your purpose actually is to advise us, the city council, because you are closer to the youth than we are, obviously, and we count on you all to let us know what the community needs in the way of youth services. So, the meeting that we're planning for January, just, you know, keep it in the back of your minds that we count on you. When you're out in the community with youth programs, doing things, because we see you all over, all kinds of activities, we'll see you there, just remember that we care. We care about what you think, and we care about your advice to us about what we need in our community for our youth. So, one of your main functions is to advise the council, so we appreciate that when you do that. So, don't be afraid to tell your leaders, and I, as I understand it, Brittany Lawler will be the new leader, and I can't think of anybody better to be your youth leader. She'll, she'll do an awesome job. She knows what she's doing, and she's just a great person besides, and she'll be very good at providing leadership for you. So, we'll ask the question, or ask the council, do you have any questions of our candidates for this commission?
No, I just, I'm always impressed at how they organize and present to the council, so.
I'm impressed with the former members, and this new group coming on sounds just as promising. They can go just as far as the former members, just have to put their hearts and minds into it, and I'm sure just by listening to them, they will do just that.
It's great to see that we're getting some of the eighth graders in. We lost a whole bunch. We lost six members this year, six seniors, which puts a pretty big dent, but we've got aspiring young leaders, and we've got, obviously, some great leadership that's capable and ready to take on all of the challenges. And it's a hard job being on the youth commission. I mean, you can't miss meetings, and, you know, you just, if you're sick, like, what is the joke, you can only call in dead, or whatever, you know, you just, you can't miss meetings. And so, we know that you've already been told this, and that you are very committed to, to this, and we appreciate that. So, you're committed to the youth of our community. Are there any comments from the public or questions? If not, do I hear a motion?
Okay, I move to adopt resolution 2668, appointing members to the Cottonwood Youth Commission, to the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission and establishing their terms of office.
Second.
Okay, the vice mayor made the motion, council member Norman seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. City clerk, please read resolution number 2668 by title only.
Resolution number 2668, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, appointing youth commission members and establishing their terms of office. Madam Mayor.
Okay, and if you'd all like to come up to have your picture taken with the city council?
One little word, don't trip your other county commission members, actually.
After you.
So, if y'all want to scooch together, maybe we can.
I want to stand by a shoulder.
So, maybe we can, we need to maybe get some.
Brittany, get up here.
Maybe we can have a taller person here behind Brittany, behind. There you go. So, I don't know, are you going to be, do we need to scooch more?
There's people across the street.
Wait for the traffic.
Shake a smile.
All right, try another one. We've got a lot of people with a lot of eyeballs to stay over.
Let me check it out before you guys move too far.
Well, it looks like we've got everybody, so, thank you all. Congratulations. We're very excited for all of you. Y'all have a great time and work hard.
See you in January.
I'll clear the room.
Yeah, no kidding.
Okay, item number two is resolution number 2669, and as I understand from the city manager and the city clerk, we are going to be requested to table this item, is that correct?
I'm sorry.
Okay, item number two in new business, resolution number 2669.
You want to?
I could comment.
Would you please comment on that?
At this point in time, we were looking at the potential for two buses, it would be 33 passenger, 34 passenger buses, from the Yuma County Intergovernmental Public Transportation Authority. That's a good one. I'd like to make that.
It is.
And the, there's one bus that didn't make it in, so we were looking at one other bus, oops, pardon me. There we go. So, there was, there was the opportunity with only one bus, and we realistically would like to have two, and at the same time period, we were informed from the Arizona Department of Transportation from the 60, or section 5311 coordinator, that there were also two large, larger buses, that would be the potential also that we could utilize out of Sierra Vista. But at this point in time, we, we felt that the buses in Sierra Vista were newer buses, had less miles, so we're probably going to, well, this is what our request was, was to table this, do a little bit more research, especially with Sierra Vista, and what the opportunity would be there, and then come back to the council with a final as to what our recommendation would be at that point in time. But we are still moving that direction, we're still working directly with ADOT. They're working very well with us, which is really an incredible thing, because we've got so many people now that are going on the Lynx, we're at around 5,300 per month.
Wow.
So, it's really high. And, and right now, it's stabilized again, but we expect that it's probably going to go up again. So, the two bus units that we're looking at, and Sierra Vista also allow for people to safely ride as they're standing, and so, it's actually engineered specifically for that, so you could actually get probably 37 to 38 people on board, which actually will help with the growth if we need it in the future, which I think we're going to need it. So, that's what we're just requesting, is that this be tabled at this point in time, and we do a little bit more research as to what we might have available for council, for the city, and for Sedona also.
So, do you think that most of these riders are like going back and forth to work?
Yes.
Is that the greatest use?
Yes, that's the largest use.
And we do get partnership and funding from the city of Sedona to.
That's right.
Help pay for that. Yes.
Do you think this deal with Sierra Vista, if it works out, will be as good a deal as the one that we've read about?
At this point in time, they're looking at the possibility of a trade, so they would like to, to look at that, and when I asked Bruce, and Bruce would be here, but he has the flu, so when I talked with Bruce today, the one thing that he indicated was that we would look at our two newest RBAC units, which, in my opinion, the state doesn't like RBAC, and we've been having a few problems with the RBAC, and we already saw one recently that actually had engine damage from the fire, and so, these, they're looking at the two RBAC units that possibly would have the lower miles, and so, we would trade those off, and we would utilize these, and we would then take the, the units that we're utilizing, which are the 19 passenger units from the Lynx, and then we would just reskin those, or actually, the state would probably do that, and the cost would be fairly minimal, and we would move those into our fleet here for CAT. So, that's what is looking at at this point, point in time. It's still a really good deal.
Yeah.
And those units, I, we're still trying to find out what the miles are on those, but they did indicate that they were a lot less miles.
Great.
And they're the, they're the large actual buses with the real slope back to the front of the bus, so they're aerodynamic, and they just, they're a nice clean-looking bus, and they're really, they're pretty sharp-looking, so, so that's one of the things we were looking at doing. We were thinking, wow, well, we got kind of chopped off with the Yuma situation there, but with Sierra Vista, it looks like we might be able to move forward with that.
Great.
Any other questions?
So, it's just, I guess we need to have a motion to go ahead and table this, because it's still in process.
I move that we table item number two under new business, resolution 2669.
Sorry, second.
Okay, so councilmember Norman made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item is tabled.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is resolution number 2670, declaring for purposes of section 11502 of the federal treasury regulations, official intent to be reimbursed in connection with certain capital expenditures relating to the acquisition of two utility department vehicles. And as I understand it.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, this is a situation where we wanted to make sure we had a reimbursement resolution on file in anticipation that we would reimburse the city budget through a lease purchase program. It turns out that our 2012 lease purchase program still had sufficient funding available through savings we had through other purchases that allowed us to go ahead and, and pay these two vehicles off. So, we, we don't need this resolution, and I don't know what the appropriate action would be, whether to just vote no, or, or withdraw it, or no action?
No action? Do we have to vote on no action, or just no?
No.
Okay, so we'll just be moving on. Okay, item number four is request from the Old Town Association for additional funding from the city. Mr. Bartosz.
Madam Mayor, council members, as you'll recall, the Old Town Association president, Lindsay Higginson, came to the council, works, was it, it was a regular session, and on October 2nd, and reported on the progress of the Old Town Association and some of their strategic plans for the future in terms of marketing Old Town, and at that point, asked the council if they would be amenable to granting the Old Town Association another $6,000 in support to help them upgrade their website and a few other projects that they had related to their strategic plan. Since that time, Lindsay Higginson has approached the Cottonwood Economic Development Committee, who does have a budget for such business development, and made a request, told them what the request was in total, and the CEDC went ahead and awarded $3,000 in funding to support their request in anticipation that the council would be willing to, to also offer $3,000 in contingency, council contingency funding to support this. And with that, Mayor, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So, we, I think it was the work session, or, no, it was the meet, prior meeting.
Yeah, it was a regular meeting.
Right, a regular meeting, and as you recall, Lindsay Higginson presented. Right, a regular meeting, and as you recall, Lindsay Higginson presented all of their accomplishments, what they're doing, their goals, their visions, and it sounds like they're just really just having a lot of success, but we can see that by the tourism numbers and that sort of thing. So council's always been very supportive in the past, and we see a lot of activity down here, and a lot of activity, new activity in the Old Town Association. So any questions?
No.
On this item? Vice Mayor?
What's really good about it is, we see the activity in Old Town, but I see the activity at the chamber.
And our other stores.
Yeah, and they have to come through certain areas of Cottonwood to get to Old Town. So it's not just benefiting Old Town. There was a couple there heading for Old Town today. We gave them a list of restaurants between here and there, and here, so they can pick and choose whether they want to stop somewhere else, or shop somewhere else. And one lady was going to go to one of the bigger stores and then come down here, so it's trickling all over, it's just not trickling down, it's all over. People are coming through and stopping and spending the night. So it's, what they're doing down here is benefiting all of Cottonwood, not just Old Town.
Absolutely, that's a good point. People who we attract here as tourists are not only coming into Old Town, but they're buying gas here, going to grocery stores, staying at hotels around town, and shopping in a variety of locations. Old Town is just kind of the attraction to get them here with the idea of-
Shopping all throughout Cottonwood.
Shopping throughout Cottonwood. We actually had one come in yesterday that said that they've stayed in Sedona the last two times, but they've been spending most of their time down here, so the next time, they will stay in Cottonwood and visit the other areas.
Mm-hmm.
Which is a good thing, there's more to do here.
That's fantastic. And definitely, I know council's very conscious of, and the chamber too, of serving the entire city. So if we can get them, the tourists here for any reason, they're going to benefit the entire city.
And it probably is appropriate to let the public know that a lot of the funding that goes to the Cottonwood Economic Development Commission or Committee is the product of bed tax. That is allocated a portion of that that goes to the chamber, the bed tax-
Gets passed through to the CEDC. Which is very, got a lot of accomplishments with the Business Assistance Center, the Economic Gardening, which is pouring support into existing businesses, ensuring that they're healthy, and those are just some goals that the commission has, as well as the council. Any comments from the public on this item?
Commander?
Yes, Mr. Isinga. Commander Isinga.
I don't know if you've heard that we had our FBI National Academy Conference here in town, and that, we actually sold out the Quality Inn Hotel, used the Best Western as our overflow hotel. One of the local companies was able to promote his product with all these chiefs and commanders from all the different agencies throughout Arizona.
Wonderful.
So, and many positive comments. We were able to use the Recreation Center for our conference. People came into Old Town and they said, you know, I've been coming here throughout the years, for however many years, and they can't believe how much Cottonwood has changed, and how Old Town has changed. And we received several positive comments about Cottonwood, and so I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you, thank you for sharing that. And I could add also that Project Central, just a couple weeks ago, was here, and Commander Isinga is a graduate of Project Central also. And they filled up, I know, they brought twenty, twenty-five people, stayed overnight, ate in our restaurants, came to Old Town. So all of these things bring people to the city of Cottonwood and our merchants. That's a good thing. So do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve $3,000 to be used by the Old Town Association from our city council's contingency fund.
Second. Councilmember Ilinski made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, ordinance number 590, amending the municipal code by deleting chapter 102040, restricted parking areas reserved for the physically disabled of Title X vehicles and traffic, and adding a new chapter 102040, restricted parking areas reserved for the physically disabled. This is the first reading, and we have Commander Isinga with us tonight to explain this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Several years ago, we reworded Title X, the vehicles and traffic section.
I recall that, we worked real hard on that.
And then we had revised this particular section after that. Apparently not quite to our satisfaction, so this is just another version that we hope will help sustain some of the citations for the adjacent areas to the handicap parking.
So do you want to explain, I mean, would it benefit the public to know a little bit more about it, the issues, and what that means for them?
Yes, we have a lot of cars that, right now, this pretty much affects one business. Some of the other businesses have adjacent areas, but the main business is Walmart. They've got these large parking areas that either cars with handicap placards, and several times cars without handicap placards, will park in these areas. And these areas were designated initially for the larger vans, the trucks that need hydraulic lifts, and the standard handicap parking space just isn't enough for them. So what we're trying to do is keep people from parking in these areas, and keep them free and clear for the loading and unloading of handicapped passengers. So any citations that we had written, our COP volunteers are the ones that are mainly out there patrolling these areas. And it affects any parking area that might have these. And so the citations were being dismissed, I guess, because the chapter wasn't clearly written. So we're hoping that this will resolve any of those issues.
Okay, so essentially, what we're trying to do is to help the disabled parking area, help the disabled that they have an area to unload.
More access to freedom of movement.
Right.
So they can use their lifts.
Okay.
And sometimes they're mounted on the side, sometimes on the back, and it's really difficult, especially in these parking lots. And I know that they have, some of the spots are actually parallel, so the trucks can just pull directly in, they don't actually have to park, so they can put in and unload. It's a lot easier.
Right.
And this is kind of a double-edged sword for us, because we get complaints when we don't enforce, and we get several complaints when we do.
Right.
A majority of the time, it's just the handicap placard. I think as far as what we can do for the public is to have them understand they have to hang their placard. We don't know if they have a placard or not. If they've got the plate, that's, you know, that's great, it's very visible. If all they have is the hanger, the little placard hanger, they have to hang those up, or they'll get a citation, because we certainly can't search their car for that.
Right. Okay, and vice mayor?
Can you clarify now, we've got handicap parking, and we have van accessible. If a car parks in the van accessible, it's not legal?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, that's for the bigger vans, for the temporary loading and unloading.
So even if a person had a placard-
They should not be parking in there.
They shouldn't be parking there.
That business has several spots. I know we do get some complaints, they say, hey, all the spots are taken. But again, those are for the temporary loading and unloading of the larger vehicles.
Okay, thank you. Are there signs there to indicate that?
I believe they painted that on the pavement.
Okay, so there is something telling them that it's for the larger vehicles?
Well, I think it says, I believe it says, "No parking."
Okay.
And again, that's not for parking, it's just for temporary loading and unloading.
So they would unload the disabled person in a wheelchair, and they would go in, and then whoever's driving would move the vehicle?
They could either move it into another spot if they needed to, correct.
Okay. All right, any questions? Okay, this is the first reading, so we won't vote on it. City clerk, please read ordinance number 590 by title only.
Ordinance number 590, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, amending the municipal code by deleting chapter 10.20.40, restricted parking areas reserved for the physically disabled of Title X vehicles and traffic, and adding a new chapter 10.20.40, restricted parking areas reserved for the physically disabled. Madam Mayor?
Thank you very much. And I didn't ask the public if they would like to speak. Mary? Okay, Ms. Eichmann?
I just had a thought, as you and the commander were explaining this parking situation. I'm at Walmart a lot, of course, taking people for caregivers, and I think that having a sign there saying "van accessible" does not make it clear to other people that it's only the vans.
Mm-hmm.
So I think if some way that could be clarified for the public, so that people would know.
And Mr. Isinga?
Colonel Daniel, that's certainly something that I could speak to Walmart management about, you know, the city can't post that, but I can certainly talk to Walmart management, see if they can clarify that.
Make it as clear as possible, as Ms. Eichmann takes a lot of probably disabled people to the store, so, okay, thank you.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I did speak with the judge about this after visiting with Commander Isinga, and our prosecutor worked with Commander Isinga and the parking folks on revising this, but I think one of the primary causes of the dismissals of the citations was disabled people actually parking in those extra hatched areas, and the earlier code suggesting that, or being at least ambiguous enough that allowed disabled people to actually park there and go into the store. We tried to clean that up here, and of course, we'll find out as soon as we start writing citations under the new code after it's adopted. But we did speak with the court about its concerns and tried to address them.
And it would be, I mean, however we can educate the public, you know, would be-
Or you can put out a press release.
Right. Or if there's, you know, if Walmart could even have a little flyer or something explaining the rules, you know, that they could hand out. Because I do know, I went in the store once, and the greeter caught me and said, this was after we passed the last rule, you know, she's like, this isn't working. So people noticed, and if they could just understand the rule, I'm sure they would-
Signage.
Oh, signage would be good. So make it clear to the public. All right, well, we're doing it for them, so, all right, thank you. Okay, the next item is item number six, approving a proposed settlement agreement between the city and Blue Canyon Investors, authorizing the mayor to sign the settlement agreement, and any additional documents required to conclude the settlement, and dismiss the city's Superior Court action taken against Blue Canyon Investors. And let me get over to that item. And we have Steve Horton, our city attorney, to explain this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a bit of a good news item, following a difficulty, as the council knows, between the spring of, summer of 2007, approximately spring or summer, and around the same time in 2011, there was an underbilling at the Pine Shadows Mobile Home Community. And we fixed the problem that led to the underbilling, we communicated with the park owner, the current park owner, there was a transition in ownership, actually during the underbilling period, which led to a bit of a complication. But our attempt to initially just collect the amount due, which was significant, was unsuccessful. So with the council's consent, we actually filed a lawsuit, collections action, seeking to recover as all or as much of that past due amount as we could. Very early in the litigation, we suggested that we should sit down before the litigation costs overcame the amount of money we were chasing, and we sat down with a mediator in a formal mediation conference, and we were able to reach what I think is a very fair, reasonable, and appropriate resolution for all parties concerned. Something I'd like to share with the council about that mediation conference is, in order to get, it's, you have to be an optimist to try mediation as early as we did. Oftentimes, parties need to get a taste of litigation, and sort of feel the pinch of the expense of it, before they're serious about moving off their initial positions. Our initial position was around $270,000, and Pine Shadows' initial position was zero. So there was a lot of movement that needed to be made. But it seemed to me in this case, that the earlier we tried to do this, the more likely it was that we could settle this, and not wind up spending years litigating some complicated factual, and actually, as it turned out, legal issues as well. So when I went down for the mediation conference, we had framed our case, we thought very well, we understood it, we were still in the process of explaining it to the other side, not to the point where we could have presented it in litigation, but to where we thought we'd made a persuasive case. And despite the complications we ran into, and the fact that the current owner of the park is not the owner that was the owner when the underbillings began, although there is some overlap in ownership, there's not, they're not the identical owner, and that gets us into a legal issue of successor corporate liability, which isn't anything we really wanted to spend our time and money arguing about. But during the course of the day, I required additional information to just prove up what we knew to be the case. And Dan's staff was just amazing, and they were able to provide me, Tony and Sharon and Roger really deserve a lot of credit, because they dropped what they were doing when I called, and got me information on several occasions throughout the day, that allowed me to arm the mediator with enough information to go into the room with the other party and say, you know, this is the city's case, it's a strong one, you need to put some money on the table. So with all that said, and with the assistance of Dan's staff, we were able, by the end of the day, to reach this tentative agreement for $140,000 in settlement of the city's claims, and we now present it to you with our recommendation that you approve the agreement.
Any questions, council? So for the future, as far as, I assume, a software glitch created this, have we got any measures that we're taking to prevent that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, and we think, we're not exactly sure what caused the billing. Yes, the software was involved, and when numbers on the dial turn, and should have registered an additional tenths place on one side of the meter, this is a single meter, as the council knows, but the public doesn't, there is a single point of delivery to the park for all the hundreds of homes, and there's a high-flow and a low-flow side. On one of those sides, when the numbers, when all the moving numbers rolled over past nines to zero, and should have, the software should have recognized that additional zero and started counting again, it didn't, and it just basically went back to true zero. And that's what led to ultimately the underbilling until it was caught. There should have been, it should have been caught by the software and flagged, and it appears not to have been. The, we are replacing, I think that the software has been fixed that we have, we're also replacing the software with part of the new citywide software upgrade. And this may or may not be neither, either here or there, but the individuals who were responsible for overseeing the system and the billing, and maybe should have caught it while it was happening, are no longer at the city.
So I think that, you know, it's kind of a lesson learned, that sometimes we try to get by and try to get by with old software, and so I'm very happy to learn that we are upgrading our software, and that hopefully this, with the new, the new, I can't think of the word, I'm trying to think of. Well, anyway, it'll have, it'll have a mechanism that will track these kinds of issues.
It should, I mean, and anytime something like this happens, and really, we investigated and actually even turned it over to the police to look at, to see if there was anything more than just an oversight, and we really, there was no conclusive finding of a-
more than just an oversight, and we really, there was no conclusive finding of exactly what happened. So what we know is there was an underbilling. We can prove that, we can confirm that, we know a lot more water was delivered than was billed for, and that's sort of substantiated by when you look at the historic usage, and how it dropped off in the bills, and then came back to the historical usage level, without any intervening change in circumstances, occupancy, usage at the park, that would support the drastic reduction in the numbers and the amounts of the bills. So that's something that should have been picked up by the software, and it should have been picked up by one or more individuals. We now, I think, have both software flags and procedures in place-
And I think safeguards was the word I was searching for.
Safeguards.
Okay, that answered my question. Any other questions, comments, of the public? If not-
Ready for a motion?
Ready for a motion.
I move to approve the proposed settlement agreement with Blue Canyon Investors, and authorize the mayor to sign the settlement agreement, and any additional documents required to conclude the settlement, and dismiss the pending Superior Court action.
Second.
Councilmember Norman made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I move to pay the claims.
Second.
The mayor made the motion, councilmember Norman seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? We missed the debate anyway. I move to adjourn, oh, did, all in favor, did we do that? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I move to adjourn.
Second.
We did the claims?
Mm-hmm.
We did the claims? Yeah. Okay, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, the mayor made the motion, councilmember Norman seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.